All right. Hey, good morning, everybody. Happy spring? Kinda? All right. So, hey, welcome to the first Town Hall of 2025. So, thanks for venturing out in the cold and windy rain and/or overcast weather to be with us. So, we have some of our board members up here. Jim Buchanan, our Park Inspector, myself. We've got the agenda up on the board here. We're gonna try and quickly go through this agenda, give you as much information as possible on the site development, what's going on in the park, where we're gonna need to go with permitting, approvals, things of that nature. And then, we're gonna open it up for member Q and A. So, we started a little bit late, about 9:03. We have about an hour-ish. We can definitely go a little over if we need to, because we started a little bit late. But, we want to get to member comments as well and questions. So, again, welcome, and I'll kick it off to Mr. Buchanan, and we'll start going through the agenda. Sound like a plan? Don't forget coffee and breakfast at Champions Cookies. Thank you, Janelle, for getting us situated here this morning. Should've been hot chocolate, too, right? All right. Jim, take it away. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeff. Really appreciate it, and appreciate your leadership. So, we're gonna start off today with site cleanup. The reason I'm focusing on this is I need to do a better job as the Park Inspector and as our leadership team to pre-warn people in advance. It was quite a shock to some members when they found out that in four or five days, they had to remove their or get their boat docks off the green space. So, it's for multiple reasons that we do these things. And, again, everyone wants what everyone else has. So, I had a lot of people say something about the, "Well, I'm on my seawall. That's still green space. If I allow you to keep it in green space, I have to allow the other people to keep it in green space, which is on our beach." A lot of these docks are not in front of their own member site. So, you're blocking an area with a holiday weekend coming up from our beach groomer to get our beach back in looking at good condition. And also, you're blocking that member possibly from using that beach or any member using the beach, because we're all entitled to the green space around the lake. So, I want to make sure that we're pushing on the cleanup. And, part of the cleanup is the fact that our park and garden is fully stocked up with what's called 30-second cleaner. They have that right now. One of the models will hook up to a hose. You can hook that up to a hose, spray it on your trailer. It goes up to 24-foot, which no trailer should be over that height here in the park. So, you can go up to 24-foot, you wait 30 seconds, and you can then turn it to the off and spray it again. So, you may, in some of the more stubborn spots, have to use a soft bristle brush. They do have some over there, or you can get a lot of those from different online sources. But, we really want to push that our park wants. We want to get our park pristine, and we want to be ahead of the game. We will be going through the park next week if you do get a notice. Anybody watching the video here or anybody here today, we're gonna try to pre-warn. We won't be able to catch it all, but we're gonna try to pre-warn people. Hey, this is one of the things we're looking at. One of the other things is, we've had some members that are what I'm gonna call seasonal projects. And, just because you have a project going on and you're doing a new deck, if those patio stones or all those blocks are piled up next to your shed, you will get a fine for that, because that has nothing to do with the new decking topping you're putting on. So, we're looking at things like that. But, in the past, we've seen a lot of people that seem to maybe just put a project on their list so that, once they have a project, then they can't get written up for a dirty lot. So, we're watching what we're fining people for. We're trying to do warnings well in advance and give people a timeframe. We want to come alongside you and work with you. We're not just the Gestapo. We're not just trying to fine or find park revenue or anything. We really want the park. But, as every one of you can attest to, most of the people I see here and see the faces, you guys do a great job of keeping your lots clean. We want your neighbors to do the same thing out of respect for you and keep things moving. So, site cleanup, please do your job and get the park in condition so that it looks good for everybody. Okay, permits and permit process. So, we've had some issues there. I just want to let you know, please, if it's in any doubt whatsoever, please call the Park Inspector's office. We'll let you know what's going on with that permit process and why we're doing it. Jeff and I have taken a lot of hours this winter and worked with Eagle and worked with the township to get specifics on what those rules are. One of the biggest things going on right now is deck retopping. If you're doing more than 10% retopping, it requires a permit. It requires a permit. For one that I ran into the other day, we went by. He'd had taken his whole tire topping off. He was putting new topping on. And, at the same time, once he took the old topping off, he looked at it. The boards were kind of dry. He knew the screws wouldn't screw into them, so he started putting up all-new joists. It was a 12-foot deck. He was using 2x6 replacement joists. 2x6 can span eight feet, not 12 feet. We don't want you to build something that's gonna cave in and cause a problem or possibly cause a problem to be sold to another person. So, not that I'm the smartest cookie in the block, but I have been a building and license builder for over 40 years. And I will help any member build something to code as close as I know it or find out why it's not to code. A lot of this new composite decking, people had 2x6 decking before. That could span 24 inches the way it was made. This new composite decking, none of it can span over 16 inches. And, most of it is now going to 12 inches, because I'm sure you've seen some of your neighbor's deck that you've had to walk on that were sway-bellied. And that's because they were not designed to carry that load. The other thing is, if you're 16 inches on center and it was designed for 16, and then you go diagonal at 45, which is why we're requiring you to tell us how you're doing it, that becomes almost 20 inches on a diagonal when you span it. So, those are the things I'm looking for to make sure we're safe out there and that you're putting the right product on. And, again, anything over 10%, just like Eagle requires on the seawall repair, requires a permit. So, we need to make sure that we're doing those permits and we're replacing things properly. We have a lot of unsafe steps. Anything that is three steps or over three risers, which means stepping into your porch, requires handrails. We're making sure that we're meeting the code for handrails. We're making sure that we have the proper egress to get in and out of things. So, those are the reasons that we're requiring it. Most of this is only gonna require a park, what I call a zoning permit, for what's legal in our park, because of what we've gotten direction from Eagle. But, again, that permit process is that way. As you know, we are trying to go to a four-digit system. So, Phase 5, K, we have a tree down, so K322. That is 5322. That's our processing for us to find your spot. However, the township, what they do is they zero in when they come and find yours. So, anything on the township permits must be your lot number and the street name. I'm 4008, as far as the park is concerned. But, that is 8 Island View Drive, Phase 4, as far as the township is concerned. So, we are rewriting a lot of these permits, and it's causing a lot of time. And that's gonna be causing delays as we get into a bigger permit process going on here. So, please be aware that we fill those permits out properly. We will help anybody that wants to come in and hook that up. Ian's gonna do a job with our self-serve 24-hour-a-day year-round kiosk that is outside of our office. All of the permits are out there. Whether it's Salem or Hopkins Township is written on the documents. There's a lock box. If you write the check, checks can only be written to the township, not to PCI, not to Sandy Pines. Those checks can get written to the township on the PCI application. If you're at Salem, it's right on my mailbox outside. If you're to Hopkins, the phases and the lot numbers are right out there for documentation. You can put those checks in the lock box that we check daily. You can put your return permits and your applications for a permit in the upper right-hand box to my door. The lower left-hand box, right next to the doors, where you pick your permit up. Security's gonna do a job where they inform me if there is construction or anything going on in a lot that does not have a placard out there. We're working with people as we get this built up. We really don't want a fine, but we do have to start enforcing this, because we have a lot of pressure from Eagle and other entities that were doing things properly. So, please fill those permits out and do that as much as possible.
Okay, so, everybody here, do they know where? You can get it at the Park Inspector's office, the permit. Do you know where to get it online? Spencer had a question as to where you could find it online. So, you go to the Sandy Pines website, and you scroll down to Park Inspector. And we'll be using this a lot. You can go down to Permit Application. Here's the major buttons for the Park Inspector. Click on Permit Application. And boom, there it is. You can print this out for those of you that are online. Hopefully, you can, because we do have some people streaming this this morning. They didn't want to venture out in the beautiful weather. So, here is the permit. One of the things that we've seen that has held up the permitting process is the drawing or engineered drawings, if you've got a porch that you want permitted, and a picture of the before and after. And, again, we talked about this last year. But, the relevance of this before and after is, Park Inspector Office gets a request for a deck. And, so, the deck is 200 square feet. So, it falls within, you know, our purview. We can go out and approve that thing. Snap us a picture of the project before, and then snap, we'll go out there, snap a picture of the project afterwards. We are following up on these permits and approving them, because the township, a few years ago, were not seeing the follow-up on this. And they weren't seeing, quite honestly, their revenue from this. So, what's being done at the Sandy Pines perspective? Why is this important? That example was a 200-square-foot deck. No picture, no picture. When we finally went out there and took a look at the site, it was, there was no, it was actually a retopping of a deck. Excuse me. There was no deck there. What he had outlined was well over 200 square feet. And that's why he wasn't sending us in pictures. Is, I want a permit for a 200-square-foot deck to re-top it. The deck doesn't exist, and the area that was laid out was well over 200 square feet. So, this is important at the beginning of the process. Please make certain that this is done appropriately. This is the other reason why, going back to the agenda, the portal permits have been shut off effective the 12th of May. Two reasons. One, we were having issues trying to upload pictures for the members that were trying to do it right. Number two, the other issue was, a lot of the members were not filling those out correctly and just submitting them. And, they were being held in the system, and then they would call the Park Inspector. "I submitted this three weeks ago. Why don't I have approval?" Well, because you haven't filled it out correctly. So, to just bypass that entire confusion process, we've shut that off. We'll work on that in the offseason to fix the uploading of the pictures and get it to where it's working properly for the members and avoid any backups. So, hopefully, that answers Spencer's question on the permits. Anything else on permits?
Just on some of the clarifications, the permits. Again, that should be very clear. Again, our 24-hour office is made to make it easy for you guys. If you come in late on Friday, early on Saturday. We are manning our hours over there from 8 till 4 every day periodically. I'll have to go out and meet a contractor, or some of my team members do. It'll say, "Be back in 15 minutes." We're trying to honor that as tight and as close as possible so that you can get the responses you want. But, 8 to 4, Monday through Friday, 8 till noon on Saturday. We're trying to be there, the exact same hours that the park is, because we understand that you members pay for a service, and we want to be there to service everything and everyone that needs their service. So, again, the member portal will shut off. Please bring them into us. We'll work with you on filling them out. Things that need special attention are awnings. And the awnings, we've seen some of the people putting on a second awning, attaching them. Those are being worked out. Those are against the law. They become a unit that's over 400 square feet, which is what Eagle has put on. That documentation is also on the Building Inspector Portal. If you need to look at any of that documentation that we have in writing from the township and from the local or from the Eagle. So, the awnings. The other thing is, we've found a lot of awnings were being put down, where they had the 3x3 post. If they're just an open awning, they were just screwed to a 4x16 patio block, four inches or an 8x16, four inches deep. In this past storm, we would've had a lot of awnings end up on their neighbor's site where they weren't wanted there. So, we are now going, we found some augers, and we've talked to PCI, and they're allowing them. We still have to be a temporary site. We can't bury 4x4s in the ground. So, on those awnings, there's an auger, either a galvanized steel and/or a composite auger that goes down into the ground 30 inches with spirals. And that can go down into there, and it receives the 3x3 post. It's 3 1/2 x 3 1/2. You have to put a spacer in there. But, again, we'll work with anybody that wants to do that for an open awning. That needs to be secured. We cannot put 4x4s or concrete in the ground for uplift, so we're using these augers. Those have been pre-approved for the state to be able to do. Seepage pits is a huge one coming up. So, I've gotten a lot of questions the last two years during inspections from the Health Department. "Hey, I see a lot of fresh dirt around these lots. What are you doing?" Their first answer was, "Hey, since 1978, you cannot replace these seepage pits." I sat down with the guy, showed him the Part 328. We went through it. "Oh, or lots that had it previously can redo them." We have one lot that has seven seepage pits on it. Now, why would you need seven seepage pits? Because you're not taking care of the one you had. So, there's two problems we're finding out. The first problem is, these seepage pits are not meeting code. So, I am now requiring pictures of the hole. I'm now requiring, put a board across, show me that the hole is 60 inches deep. I need to see that you ordered a full yard and a half, not 3/4 of a yard of stone, because that's what it takes to properly put this amount of stone around these seepage pits. The seepage pit, I want to see the barrel with holes in it. Again, we don't want to slow you down. You can send these pictures to the Park Inspector, but we're running into some huge problems with this. So, I want to see four pictures. The hole that it truly is 60 inches deep, take a board across from it, put a tape measure in, shoot a picture. I want to see that the barrel has the holes in it. Send us a picture. When the barrel's in, I want to see a tape measure across it, and I want to make sure that we have only our pre-approved rock that's over at Park and Garden, or you can bring in your own, and that it is six inches around that bucket that has the proper holes to drain out. And then, I want to see that there's 12 inches on top of the bucket once it's in your ground that you can cover it. And I would like to see fabric down there before you put the dirt so that that dirt doesn't seep down and block those rocks from doing their job. The other thing is, I tried a product personally. My wife has beautiful long hair, but that long hair gets in the drain. And that long hair then follows the drain down and gets into the seepage pit. Last year, I asked a couple of people to please send me the pictures of your seepage pit and why it failed, why it's backing up into the trailer. Hair and grease. Take anything organic, even meat, blood. Please put it in your bag and throw it in the trash. Don't put it down there. But, the other thing is, since 2020, the research I've found is that we're using the bacterial, antibacterial soap more and more. And then, all your kids and grandkids come out, and you've just put 100 doses of antibacterial soap. You've killed all the bacteria that's supposed to eat that up, and now your seepage pit isn't doing its job. There's a product called Green Goblin. It's not that expensive. I recommend personally taking Green Goblin with the enzymes in it that will eat away that bacteria and put it in four times a year, especially at winterization, so it can work throughout the season. Let's work on caking the seepage pits we have and maintaining them better before another rule comes down and we start putting junk in our lake, and then we have to do something different. Let's maintain what we have and go forward with that on those seepage pits.
Thank you. So, why? Why is this so important? Again, there's no reason to have seven seepage pits on a lot. But, the alternative to this is, if we don't take care of our seepage pits, again, state can come in and require us to put in our own sewer system. And, that is huge dollars to try and connect all of our phases to a sewer. So, where's the sewer gonna go? Do we have a sewer pond? Do we have a regular sewer system? These are things that we're trying to avoid. So, you know, I just am sensing, I saw some of the faces out in the crowd, when we're, "We're gonna need this, we're gonna need that." Holy cow, that is overbearing. Are you kidding me right now? We're at a point where unfortunately, we have to do this to ensure that it's done properly, because the alternative is, it's gonna, I'm a member here, it's gonna cost us a ton of money if we get forced into a sewer system. So, let's do it right, four times out of the year, winterization. We'll talk to, you know, even, hopefully Ben's not watching, because I haven't brought this up to him yet. But, maybe we talk to Ben and the winterization crews to add this, add a winterization at the end of the season. But, we're just trying to be preventative to protect the park, okay?
So, that, as well as the, and there'll be questions and answers after, so you can all ask questions if you want them afterwards, or pull me aside and ask me a specific question. And then, the other was more or less the deck. The deck topping, seawalls, what we're allowing out in the green space at the seawall, what things are considered. Once you go over four foot, it's a walkway. Once you go over four foot, it's considered a deck when you can do things. I understand we want to beautify our places, and we love it when you beautify them, because everything looks really nice. But, right now, we are trying. And, when I was hired on by Jeff, the thing was, hey, when you come in here, all I ask is that when you give it your all, and when you leave this place, you leave it better than when you found it. There've been a lot of things that were falling through the cracks. I'm trying to be progressive. I'm a member here. I would love to transfer our trust over to our children and our grandchildren and now great-grandchildren. We've also fully invested over in the condos. So, this is our whole life. This is our launchpad during the winter, so we can leave from the condos and go trips. And it's our summer place right on the lake. So, I have a fully invested future here, and I would do nothing more. And I would, I will do it before I ask you guys to do it. Just because that's what's right.
Okay. So, again, we're not trying to be overbearing. We're just trying to educate the membership to protect the park, do the right thing, and own our destiny here. Trailer modifications. So, this was obviously a hot topic last year. You know, we came out, met with the board. There was a resolution that was introduced in June. Sat out there for a while. Came to a vote in July, and the board tabled that resolution. And what that resolution was really, I don't know, I remember it vividly. 062424C. I don't know if everybody else vividly remembers that one. But, so, that one was basically to help define what ANSI is requiring of our park models and what you can and can't do. So, that was the trailer modifications. You can't cut out your walls, can't cut out, you can't remove your sliders, doors, windows, conditioned space, things of that nature. That one got tabled by the board, and we went through that process during the offseason. We took in a ton of questions from members, a ton of input. And, we had multiple meetings. We had meetings with the township. We had meetings with the county. We had meetings with Eagle. And, we needed stuff in writing as our members asked and requested. What can we do? What can't we do? What's against the law? What's not against the law? So, we spent a ton of time on that. And, if you sat through this at the board meeting in May, I apologize. But, again, this information is on the website. You go to our website, you go back to the Park Inspector section, all the way down at the bottom. Better?
Much better.
Okay, thank you, Ian. 2020, Eagle took the responsibility away from DNR. They weren't getting out. So, during this process, Eagle sent out a letter identifying, per Public Act 368, what a park model is, what a cabin resort is, and things of that nature. So, when we had our conversations with Eagle, again, we highlighted all the questions. Well, what about just removing the door-window slider because of airflow? What about, you know, cutting out a wall? What about conditioning the space? I have air conditioner going into the park model trailer and the porch on the left and the right. Any change to the park model, according to the law from Eagle, is you are no longer a park model. You fall into a resort cabin. And legally, resort cabins are not allowed on a state campsite. The park has its own green space or property. With our structures, that we can put footings in and we can do these things, that is the park property. We're allowed to do some of these things. Member sites are individual campsites licensed by the state of Michigan. Originally, during our discussions with Eagle, they said, "If you have any change to the identity of the park model, you have to tell me how many you have, and they have to be physically removed." That's not gonna work. We don't know how many are out there. So, what's the corrective action process? So, through dealing with, again, PCI, Alleghen County, and Eagle, when you look at the ANSI standards, the ANSI standard does have a reinstall, a repair process. So, you know, I use the analogy of, let's say, my grandson Spencer throws a ball through the slider door and it breaks. And I go to Vacation Land, and I say, "Hey, listen, I need this replaced." They say, "Well, I can't get it for 12 weeks." So, now my resort cabin, and within that 12 weeks, I'm illegal, and I have to remove my trailer. There is a repair and reinstall and replace process. You don't have to have anybody come out and certify this again. Just put it back the way it was. We have Vacation Land, who's a dealer, authorized dealer across the street. We have good contractors. It has to go back to the definition in Public Act 368. Fully enclosed, single- Fully enclosed, single thermal envelope, its own entity with waterproofing because it has to be a vehicle. A vehicle has to travel down the road, fully enclosed, waterproofed on the road. That's what a park model is, that's what the definition is by state. So we went through that process, we put a corrective action in place and then they said, we'll agree with the corrective action, again, go out and tell us how many you have. Well, we're not gonna knock on everybody's door, so we're gonna go through this process and we have been going through this process, through the sales process of attrition. So anytime a sale comes up, and this is our standard process, Park Inspector gets notified, whether it's a for sale by owner or through our sales department or even a transfer, mom, dad to one of the kids, the Park Inspector goes out, has to make certain that the site is compliant. Part of that inspection is doors, windows, sliders, walls, are they cut out, are they removed, they have to be put back. We will ask for a timeframe, it's been a negotiation between the buyer and seller because one of the scenarios we had during the offseason is, well, I'm the seller, I'll make it compliant, I'll go to the dump, find a slider, put it back in there, put some waterproof tape around, it needs to be done right. And then if I'm the buyer, I'm gonna look at this thing that came out of the dump that's maybe 19, sorry if I'm dating anybody here, but the 1950s or 60s olive green and I have this beautiful trailer in here, it doesn't match the decorating, so it's been a negotiation between the buyer and seller and we've, we've done this for the last year, year and a half with get it fixed, okay? The state has allowed us to follow that attrition process. So last year we had about 40 that came in noncompliant and we have almost all 40 corrected. So the state has also said, because we're allowing you to go through this, this process, during our re-up of our license, prior to getting that, they're gonna wanna see the log on how many have you had and where, where they add in the corrective action process. So part of that is out online, if you go to this, and I apologize for the eye chart, try and blow this up a little bit more. What this is, is this is a document that we put together, we reviewed with every single entity, we reviewed with PCI, we reviewed with Alligan County Health Department and we reviewed with Eagle. So this is a pyramid of enforceability, back to the park is its own internal zoning office. We have to enforce the code, the state law, everything that can go in a campground, we're the first step. Next step is the township. The township is responsible for local zoning court enforcement based on residential code, so this is PCI. So PCI will come out and inspect your electrical, your heating and cooling, even your porch construction and things of that nature. They do not look at park models because park models are already built to an RVIA standard and specification and when it leaves that facility, it gets stamped, so when they come out here, their expectation is, it's already certified and meets state law requirements. Now, they will call Jim or they will call me and say, hey, you may, you may wanna take a look at something at such site because we think that it's not necessarily compliant, but they are not physically responsible, nor do they, if they're looking at the outside for HVAC or a shed or whatever, they're not gonna be knocking on doors and going in. But if they see it, they'll highlight it to us, that's the second level. Third level is County Health Department, County Health Department is responsible for all the food that goes through this park. You know, we have the Dairy Dip now, we have the restaurant, this convenience store, Happy Shack and any water treatment wells, seepage pits, drinking water, things of that area, things of that nature, they also have responsibility per the 2010 letter of structures. They will have some responsibilities for gazebos, awnings, structures, things of that nature. Then the last at the top of the pyramid is the state. And the relationship that we've built with all of these levels has been pretty solid and basically in full transparency, the two people from the state that we have to deal with are responsible for half of the UP and all of the lakeshore in the state of Michigan. So that's the good news, they're hard to get a hold of at times because they're on the road. The not so good news is Sandy Pines is the largest campsite in RV, RV park in the state of Michigan and I think we're still the second in the nation. So they do have eyes on us, but because we've put these structures in place and we've built the relationship with the township and the county and we've provided these letters on behalf of the township and the county, they're allowing us to manage this appropriately and to try and get everything back in compliance. This eye chart here is basically the responsibility in this column and then the entity that's responsible and then down in the blue area is the rule from Eagle and then who basically touches that rule? Is it a county rule and a state rule, is it just the county, is it the township? And then off to the side here, we put our Sandy Pines corresponding rules to kind of overlap and match with that. So all this information is out here, the team's done a pretty extensive research and time into this. We gave all the questions, including one of the biggest questions that came up was, well, hey, a park model manufacturer designed and built this to the specific, or to the, my requirement of, I wanted a door removed or I wanted an extra large opening, might put a slider in, might leave it open concept, I gotta figure out how to connect my second porch, so they designed it that way. We brought those questions to the manufacturers, their responses are, yep, we fully acknowledge that, but we built it that way, we put siding over that, we put waterproof paneling, we put the zip tape that's waterproof over it. So when it left my facility, the manufacturing facility, it was legal per the state of Michigan where it was fully enclosed, it had waterproof closures on every single opening and it traveled down the road, not an issue. What you do with it in your park is your responsibility and not ours. We didn't like that answer. That's the answer we got. So we brought that to the state, their response was, I can't do anything about the park model manufacturers, but my purview is the, the campsites and Sandy Pines and the other campsites in the state of Michigan. So is it compliant or not? If it's not compliant, we gotta get it compliant. That was probably the biggest, one of the biggest questions that we got from members. So this is not the answers that we wanted, we did talk about grandfathering. Anybody that's in code doesn't like the word grandfather, it's either, does it exist or does it not exist? Was it preexisting or is it existing now? We heard that a few times and states not entertaining any grandfathering clauses because the law has been out there since 1978, 1980, so on and 2010, so on and so forth. Jim and I have kind of pressed the, the law also states that Eagle, when you hold some potential changes to the laws, changes to the rules, policy, how, how the state views these and enforces them, there's a stakeholder committee that they're supposed to be holding. Sandy Pines as well as a couple of other parks that are in this situation as well has asked Eagle to get us on those committees and we are actually meeting the first or second week of June with Eagle. They are looking at making some rule changes. Obviously, we will press to, if you're making rule changes, these rules have been compliant for the last 15, 20 years. If you're making a change, then anything moving forward should follow the rules, anything backwards, how do we, how do we make certain that those individuals aren't penalized? They're gonna ask us to document, we're gonna have to go by each site, how do you document it? So that's, that's kind of where we're at right now. We're working tirelessly to make certain that we don't lose our campground license, so. That's kind of where we're at with that, I don't know if you wanna add anything else, why switch over here Jim?
Yeah, and again, the statements, my trailer was one of those. I eliminated the entertainment center so that I could get into my second porch. I made my trailer smaller so I could put double porches on it to meet my, the law and to meet what was the requirement. I had a Sandy Pines building permit, PCI came in and looked at them. So the answers all there were, the RV is ANZI 119.5. PCI is not licensed to look at ANZI 119.5. So 119.5 is the fact that that trailer came in under the state Eagle laws and PCI has no authority over that. They do have back-to-back zoning authority with us. So when they came and looked at mine, their comment was, your porch, which is what your permit says, was legal. It met the requirements, your trailer did not, at that point, that wasn't our enforcement, so we didn't make that call that your trailer was illegal. When I went to the manufacturer, they said, you removed the panels, you made it illegal, not us. So I immediately ordered a door last year and put it back in, because I'm not gonna ask you guys to do something I'm not gonna do. And am I selling? No, we're gonna keep it in the family, Lord willing, for years and years. But I'm not gonna ask you guys to do something I won't do. I just have a different reasoning behind that, so again, the law is the law and a lot of people don't understand that. HUD, when we looked at it, Jeff and I got some legal documents, HUD says that there's such things. HUD is the federal authority for housing. They have a notch out for what's called modular homes. Modular homes are built on a trailer that temporarily delivers that home, comes off with a crane, gets set up. Then they have another notch out for mobile homes. Those get delivered and the trailer stays with that home. The trailer stays with that home, but you can remove the axles and the tongue and put it on a foundation. Then the final is, we will give authority to RVs under ANZI, under their own development, as long as they stay under their own development. Even the HUD document says, the minute you remove a door and a window and don't have a 400 square foot habitable, enclosed environment, then it becomes one of the other models and we're not licensed to put that in this park. We don't have that licensing, that's on one of our documents. And the other thing that HUD did back in about 2000 and, I believe it was 2012, the HUD from federal said, if you remove the addition that was added to the RV and that is no longer a thermal environment and will get wet, meaning your doors and windows were taken out and the room comes off and you travel, it no longer met that code and the total square footage is now the legal square footage which makes us a camping resort. So we have beat this thing to death. I just wanted to give you that little quick scenario of why it's done. And so that's, that's where we come into play and that's why we're doing what we're doing right now to bring us back into legality.
All right, last thing on this, then we'll open up to questions. So back to the resolution, so back in December, actually January, the, the board pulled 062424C off the table because existing rules already exist in our handbook and if you go to the camping units, I wanna say it's item B and it defines 400, you, you have to meet ANZI 1192, 1195 and it has to be 400 square feet, that's it. So you start removing doors, windows, sliders, cutting out walls, putting a porch up against it, you have increased from 400 square feet to 600, 800, 1200, whatever that is, and you are now a resort cabin. So that's why the resolution was pulled, that's why we're continuing to force, the way we have been enforcing it. Quite honestly, it's been going well. We know there were some upset individuals, members last year and you know, we, we heard a lot of their challenges. We've asked the questions, we've put this in place and it's, it's been going well. And we just gotta get back into compliance. The state, county, township, they don't wanna hear about, well, Park Inspector 16 years ago allowed this, or the, the old regime at the code enforcement or the prior DNR people, they didn't look, they didn't care. They don't wanna hear about it, it's, it's law, so we have to, we have to abide by it. With that, we'll try and open up for questions, if any members have questions. If, again, if you haven't been to the first board meeting, Ian has done a great job with live streaming, again, some of the video and audio challenges that we've had because of this room being so echoey. He's done a great job eliminating that, but in order to eliminate it, so the live stream people can hear the questions, comments, we do need you to use that microphone because the microphones are piped into the new system. If you don't use a microphone and you're sitting at your seat, then the members online live streaming can't hear you. So we'll open up for questions, comments.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Sorry, we missed the first part of this, but we're lot 53 and we have a ton of trees that were in the green space that are now on her property. Is somebody cleaning that up or is that going to be our responsibility?
Okay, so there's a yes and no answer to that, so we've been over that area and we've cleaned up a lot of the trees. Once a tree, no matter where it's from, your neighbor's lot or green space, once the tree hits the house or hits a structure that was insured, that becomes an insurance claim and we are not allowed to touch those so that, if it hit your shed, if it hit any personal property, that then becomes an insurance claim and all of those people have to contact their insurance company. We do have a man that's in the park, we did very diligently, we called early yesterday morning, got two extra contractors in the park as well as our own team and they did an amazing job already. I'm sorry that they went till 8 o'clock last night, but thank you to them for working that hard. They started again at 6:30 this morning, so I can come and look at that specific lot, but if it hit anything, that is definitely going to be an insurance claim for that property. If it did not hit anything, we cleaned a lot of that area up. And again, let me explain green space because hopefully this will make sense to a lot of people. We've had a lot of people build, especially on the lots towards the lakefront, but because there's so much extra space, they've come to us and they've asked to put fireplaces in, they've put walls in, retaining walls and fireplaces. Once you take over that space and you, I've had people come to me and say, hey, a tree fell down and it's on my fireplace. That becomes your place. You've maintained, you, you used that green space as your own space. Yes, anybody else in the park can use it, but if you've maintained that, I had a gentleman in the green space over here, asked me to remove three trees that were in the green space so he could extend his patio. That's for his beautification and his use. I'm being very diligent with all of your members' money and I'm not spending it on beautifying someone else's lot because you wanna spend it on your own lot to beautify it. So that's a area that I have to look at specifically. If you've moved and you're, you're using all that space, I had one member say, hey, a tree fell down in the green space. Great, we have no problem with that, well, now I can't mow it. Oh, you, so you wanna use it for your extended lot, then that becomes your maintenance and that would become that. So not trying to be a jerk, but I'm also not trying to spend other people's park money, which we have a very limited source of, to clean up your lot and your space, that becomes your space. But I can definitely get over and look at that one specifically.
That would be great, so if I hear you correctly, if it started on the green space and it's now on our space, if the branch is just brushed up against the garage, now it's mine?
Yeah, unfortunately, because take a look at the residential area, during the storms, you know, we had a tree that fell from our neighbors over onto our property.
We've got like five or six or seven.
Understand. I, I understand and, but this is, if it's touching any of your property, that's why we have insurance here and play this out, if we have our maintenance crew or we have one of our contractors come in and do it for the park and all of a sudden they damage your car, they damage your house or your trailer or your shed, then the members are coming to Sandy Pines for a claim because we damaged it. That's why we have insurance unfortunately, I've got the, I got the same issue from storms in, in my own, in my own area, neighborhood and my son's going through the same thing. It may start here, but if it lands on your property, on your site, it's your responsibility to get it clean. We can help you with that, we've, we've, as Jim stated, we've got contractors that are going through the park. We've, we've, as Jim stated, we've got contractors that are going through the park. We've told the members, "Hey, call your insurance people," and they've actually, while the crew is there, you know, taking the stuff off the road, they will get a claim number, and then those contractors will go over there and take care of it immediately. It, it has been pretty expeditiously done, but that's kinda where we're at, unfortunately.
Okay, so we should contact insurance, and then maybe you'll come look at Lot 53?
Let's have Jim look at it first, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, let me look at it first, and then once I look at it, we'll be able to make, make a definite situation there. But again, we also have to protect the park, because if, uh, the tree guys pick it up and we're paying for them, and then it scrapes up and rip your face off, you're gonna obviously want us to fix it. So, it becomes an insurance claim, and we have to try and make that separation. So, I'll look at that one, and I'll look at any other ones, eye to eye, and anybody online. Please, issue, uh, you can go to inspector@sandypines.com, send me pictures, or jim b, J-I-M, B as in boy, at sandypines.com, and we will be doing a lot of this tree, um, situation next week. These gentlemen are here today. They started, I'm sorry for the early noise at six-thirty, but they, we had them start early today. They worked till eight o'clock last night. They're doing a heck of a job for our park here. We've been able to pull some strings and get them here. They're here again tomorrow. I know it's Sunday, but we have a, a, a big holiday weekend coming up, and they're gonna also be here for two days tomorrow. So, we will pull them from our sites and get them over to your sites as soon as we can, but we do need an insurance claim number to do that. So, again, thank you very much. We're doing the best we can under the situation. That's why they call these accidents, though. Thank you.
All right, so we'll look for you sometime today?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Anybody else? Anybody but Brian.
On the sec, on the section that, uh, you're talking about awnings. Jim, you and I have had this conversation before. What are you referring to when you say an awning?
So, an awning slash patio cover, 'cause I'm one of the old awning guys from back in the seventies and eighties here. A lot of times, they were called Houmett awnings. They were the interlocking eight-inch panels. Those have now come into the insulated ones. So, awnings, generally speaking, are, whether they're open or not, most people consider an awning an open patio cover. They're still an awning even though there's a sunroom underneath them. We've had some members here take the awnings, and they thought through previous administration decisions that adding that to the front and screwing it to the back and carrying it out as a area, that's their gazebo. Well, wait a minute, gazebos are two at thirteen by thirteen, so it's not a gazebo. Oh, wait a minute, okay, then it's an awning. Awnings can be attached to the unit and no further than eleven feet, plus the three inches for the gutter out. So, when you put an awning screwed to an awning, you now become over four hundred square feet, and that's what the health department and, uh, through Eagle is looking at. So, those have to be removed, they have to be freestanding. I look at a lot of those that are freestanding, and they took that composite decking that doesn't have a lot of strength, and they bolted the, the snow weight right to that. Some of those have cracked, and so, we're, again, we're trying to make things look legal, but also within the four hundred square feet and that they are freestanding gazebos. You can still use awning material, but it's considered a gazebo based on our park rules. Those are things that I'll come and look at one-on-one, but there has been some people that were written up and have to remove those and make them into two thirteen-by-thirteen structures. And the thirteen-by-thirteen was a rule that we're looking at, but it's thirteen-by-thirteen max. I cannot do a twelve-by-sixteen or a ten-by-sixteen 'cause it stays within that square footage per view. It has to be, maybe it's gonna go back to a ten by two thirteen-foot structures that cannot be attached.
Okay, so, you have porches, right?
Porches with awnings on them.
We have enclosed porches, we have awnings, and we have gazebos. Those are three different structures, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, when you were talking about awnings, you were talking about augers and, and putting them in the ground and footings and all that?
Yes, sir.
So, those are allowed?
To, to screw that in, like, for instance, one got done last week. He didn't put a porch on, he just put an awning against his trailer and came out. We had him screw those augers into the ground, and that's where his three-by-threes attach. So, that, luckily, that one had a, a extreme wind load over there, but it never ripped out of the ground because we had him do augers.
So, if I, so if I have a trailer, I have a park model, I can put an awning attached to the side of that park model?
Correct.
Okay, and I have a park model, and I have an enclosed porch, I cannot put an awning attached to that closed porch?
Correct, sir.
Why not?
Yep.
I can't hear you.
The rules state that you have to attach it to your trailer? That's in the rulebook?
Show me where it says that, because my interpretation of that, it does not say it has to be attached to the trailer.
Okay, are you talking about a sal, solid panel situation of an awning or gazebo?
Oh, open enclosure, just a roof with some pillars, right? All aluminum material attached to the porch.
Okay, cannot be attached to the porch, it must be attached to the trailer.
But why?
We'll, we'll pull that rule and give it to you.
The awning construction permit must be accompanied by engineered building plans, which provide full uni, full details on type of construction, quality of material, all dimensions, and show how the awning will be attached to the trailer, and size and placement of posts. Top plate of an awning must be mounted to the side of the unit. The unit is the trailer.
It doesn't say that it cannot be attached to the porch. It just addresses.
It says it has to be attached to the trailer.
But that's a Sandy Pines rule, right? That's not an Eagle rule. That's a Sandy Pines rule. I'm wondering why.
It is the Sandy Pines rule, but when you go outside of that and then you extend that further, the Eagle rule is four hundred square feet or more.
How does that, how does that affect the four hundred-square-foot rule when it's completely outside?
Because you're stru, go to the 2010 Eagle letter, the DNR letter. It'll walk you through that, Brian. You have specific square footage for an awning, a shed, a gazebo, and a trailer. When you are extending those awnings out, you are going beyond the state requirement of square footage. We've already been written up twice by the county on that.
Maybe we can talk offline about that, because when I've gone through the Eagle re, the, the booklet, I'm on the Rules Committee, so I'm looking at this stuff. I can't see the correlation at all.
And it's not up to whether we see it or not, it's up to whether who's enforcing it, and that's the county, and we've been written up twice for it.
Okay, we'll talk offline. You can show me where it says that, 'cause I, I don't see that.
I just read it to you.
And yes, we have been written up twice for the, uh, the over four hundred square foot. So, once you attach it to that awning, it makes that awning. So, if you attach an awning to an awning, it's, becomes one single structure, and that's the same thing as the porches. And that's one of the things we're getting into with Eagle, too, is how we attach to our units. Yes, sir?
Brian's comment was for me, okay? K, K267, Kevin Peppera, question. So, you're saying I can't do what we've done according to a inspector? Okay, I, I, I get all that. But I can take that off, take my covered patio off that I spent good money on, and replace it with a roll-out awning on my porch. Why is that? It's still a structure, the same dimension, okay? Only it's not aluminum. It's a fabric which flaps in the wind, could come loose, create problems for other people, safety-wise. Why would I be allowed to put a retractable awning on my porch, but I can't have what I have? You're telling me I have to cut it loose from the porch and it can be freestanding, okay? But it can only be thirteen by thirteen. I just don't get it. I can put a, let's, let's just use a figure of twenty-eight-foot retractable awning, okay? But I can't have the awning that I have, which is twenty-eight-foot, okay? Freestanding. Um, I just don't get it, because you say I have to cut it at thirteen feet. It's not a gazebo, it's an awning. I can have a retractable awning, but I can't have a, a nice permanent structure. I, I don't get it.
You just said it very clearly in the words you said. I can't have a permanent structure. That falls under PCI Building Code, and it says in the rulebook from the state of Eagle that you cannot have a permanent structure larger than four hundred square feet. You became with your permanent structure screwed together, a permanent structure, and awning that rolls out is not required to be coded through PCI, because they consider that, as well as the gazebos, temporary. Gazebos and the roll-out awning fabric are not considered permanent structures. Your aluminum awning is, and that requires a PCI permit.
So, even though it's freestanding?
Yours is actually not freestanding, it's screwed to there, and that's why they, where, the, how it's been affixed. They consider that permanent, and they consider your awning, again, with our rules saying you can go out eleven foot plus a three-inch gutter. Yours now goes out over twenty-two feet from your trailer where it's to be attached.
So, you're saying I can detach it, the bolts that are, and, and completely make it freestanding, and I'm okay?
No, because it's over the thirteen-by-thirteen gazebo.
So, now you're trying to con, convert it from an awning to a gazebo?
That's what it becomes. And again, if you kept it as a permanent structure because of the square footage and the size, that then again becomes a PCI structure and a permanent structure added to that. We, we've talked to them, and we've shown them these things. It's, again, what's to say that everyone doesn't put a, um, twenty-two-foot by thirty-two-foot structure on their site? That's where the four hundred-square-foot rule comes into play from Eagle.
But yet you allow, you've grandfathered in two porches, which is definitely bigger than twenty-two foot. And you're saying that's grandfathered in? The, the, the two porch deal is grandfathered in, but yet it still adds more square footage to your unit?
Actually, Kevin, it's not. It, it's grandfathered in, the two porches are grandfathered in. They have to be fully enclosed, single thermal envelopes.
I get it.
So, each one of them's four hundred square feet or less. That's state law, that meets state law. Yours does not because of, one, it doesn't meet the Sandy Pines definition of the awning, and how, and two, if you use that the way you have it now, you exceed the square footage of the county and the Eagle requirements for that structure. The reason why we bring up gazebo is, we do see some of these throughout the park. The option for you and others is, it's illegal, it doesn't make code, tear it down. But, because members have spent the money on this, however they got it, you know, built, our corrective action that the county and the state are allowing us to do is freestanding, separate it, turn it into two gazebos, thirteen by thirteen. It meets county, Eagle, Sandy Pines requirements. So, it meets law. If it's a, if it's a law, we cannot grandfather anything in against the law. That's, that's the corrective action for these awnings that have been built that way.
Okay, I'd like to have a, a meeting with you guys. As, as all of us would.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yep. And thank you for that question. So, yes, it's, it's definitely, and the other thing is, too, when we went back to PCI, there was never any permits pulled. I understand you, you felt you paid the permit fees and stuff. Okay. Okay, when, I don't know how they got rid of it, so we'll see you separately. No problem. No. It all needs to get out.
No, it, it's a good question, because if Kevin's asking it, or you're asking it, there's ten other people that are asking it, right? So, it's, it's not, it's not anything personal, it's not, it, they're good, they're good questions. And we've gotta, we've gotta find, we've gotta find the, the resolutions and the corrective actions to get these things back into compliance. So, no, good question.
One other thing in, in lieu of that, Kevin, so, the fabric sunscreens, those have been going up all over the place that everyone sees here. And again, there's, try to go to your state park and dig a hole in the ground and see if the security or the guards don't stop you from digging a hole in the ground to put up a fabric, uh, awning. So, what we've done is, and even the, the park president, when he asked me how he could do something, I said, "Go buy one of those large pots from Home Depot and put it above ground and put concrete in there and put your poles up to support it." As long as it's above ground, we have no problem with that. So, you can do those, those sunscreens, and those sunscreens are not permanent, do not require PCI permits, and they're not falling under the four hundred square feet. So, those are an option, especially for a sunshade, especially with the way your, your structure takes on the sun and the heat. We understand why you've done it, but those are, again, we're allowing, when it's not a permanent structure, to do that based on what the law states. So, we're trying to be as, giving you guys as many options as possible to do that sun control and take care of your situation. It's the permanent awnings that become the issue. Yes, Brian?
So, this one isn't a question, it's just a comment. When you were talking about seepage pits, and you mentioned Green Goblin, I don't know if we saw that parking garden, but just to promote parking garden, they have enzyme magic, too. I used to use that all the time, I highly recommend. Spend your money at Park and Garden and put that stuff in there and keep your seepage pits safe. You didn't mention Park and Garden. You had a perfect opportunity.
Park and Garden is already looking at that. I've talked to Chet yesterday, and I believe they will be carrying that. I did do a sample of that Green Goblin the other day, and, um, um, not that it would be anything that Brian would have a problem with, but when you do have hair that gets caught in the drain, it will eat the, the, it, it, it removed the sink, it removed that, and it flowed absolutely perfect after thirty minutes, and that is a non-bleach alternative, so we're not putting anything bad in the ground. But, let's take care of what we have instead of having to replace what we have. It's a whole lot more expensive to put another six hundred-dollar seepage pit in than it is to just use some of that Green Goblin.
It's li, the question was, is it liquid or, or granular? It is, it is liquid, so. Gobbler, Green, thank you.
The other thing is, um, one of the bigger things, uh, as far as, uh, again, site development, we've had some issues out there with the, um, with the geese. And some of those geese can, uh, be worse than, uh, the neighbor's pet coming over on your lawn, uh, if you know what I mean. So, the parking garden's gonna look at something else, but right now, they do have the goose-gone material that we've used out on the island, and that is a liquid. It'll make it for about thirty days, even with rain. What that does is that puts an irritating taste on the grass. Doesn't work very good on the sand, but it does work on the grass, and they don't like eating the bugs out of the grass 'cause they get a bitter taste in their mouth, and they will go somewhere else, probably to your neighbors that isn't using it. But they do have some of that chemical at Park and Garden. Let's re, let's, let's spend the money at our own park. And the other thing that I talked to Chet about getting is, and that my wife and my mother-in-law have used, is the Prism Tape. Take some of those, um, inexpensive white stakes that you can push down with your foot. They have a metal stake on the bottom, they go into the ground, and then add about six inches high for the little goslings that have now come out, and then their mom and dad, another row up, and that reflective tape will scare them when it blows in the wind and when the sun comes out. We're gonna talk to Park and Garden about getting some of that, too. So, um, you're gonna be able to hopefully do a better job of keeping those geese out of, uh, making, uh, mud paddies for your children to play in.
All right, ten after ten. So, went a, went a little bit over, started a little bit late. Last call on, uh, any questions? Okay, again, a, a, a lot of this, specifically the modifications, awnings, things of that nature, they are good questions. We have people asking them. Set up a meeting with Jim, myself, um, we'll go through that stuff. We are trying to find solutions, because we, we fully acknowledge that there's been some things that have been done, may have been okayed, um, back in the day, and right now, the state is just saying it should've never been, so we're trying to find solutions. We're not trying to be punitive and, and, uh, you know, the Gestapo out there. So, um, we're, we're trying to work with everybody, so. Board has been, uh, fully engaged in this as well. Everything that we've shared, all the information and probably more. I think ad nauseam, the board has been, um, involved with this, and the file that we have is probably about that thick of stuff that we've reviewed, so. We are trying to get this, uh, taken care of in, in the right way, so, okay? Thank you for coming. Hopefully, the weather improves. You guys have a blessed rest of the weekend and a blessed day. Thanks.